Good evening. Is this microphone working? Can you hear me? You can't hear me.
(inaudible)
Test, test.
No.
We've got the monitors working, but...
How about this one? Any better?
Testing, testing.
Ooh.
Hi Kenny.
Can people hear this one?
I fixed the monitors, but now the mics don't work.
Okay. I think, I think we'll just...
Hello, hello.
Hello, hello, hello.
No, they're not working.
This is a regular meeting of the Princeton Planning Board. It's Thursday, March 21st, 2019. Is that better?
Yes.
Ah, there we go.
He did something in there.
Okay.
Yeah, Jack.
Yeah. The opening statement is as follows. Pursuant to Section 13 of the Open Public Meetings Act, adequate notice of the time and place of this meeting has been given by prominently posting the 2019 Agenda Resolution on the regularly scheduled meetings of the Princeton Planning Board. Such notice has been placed on the official bulletin board at the Princeton Municipal Complex and is to be maintained throughout the year by transmitting a copy of such schedule to the Princeton Packet, Town Topics, The Times, Trentonian, and Comcast Media. A copy has been filed with the Clerk of Princeton on the 7th day of December 2018. Legal notice on the adoption of said resolution appeared in the December 14, 2018 edition of the Princeton Packet. Could you call the roll please?
Ms. Capizzioli, Mr. Cohen.
Yes.
Mr. Quinn, Ms. Sax.
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz.
Here.
Mr. Texorni.
Here.
Mrs. Alman.
Yes.
Ms. Wilson.
Here.
Mrs. Gunning.
Yes.
Mr. Oakman, Mr. McGowan.
Yes, yes.
We have a quorum, thank you.
Thank you. The major announcement for tonight is that tomorrow morning at 10 o'clock in the community room, that's the 22nd of this month, there will be a meeting of the Ad-Hoc Committee. And maybe I can ask Ms. Alman to just say what's going to be going on.
Yes, this is the Ad-Hoc Committee that is reviewing the plans for the Princeton Seminary's redevelopment project. And we will be meeting tomorrow, it's a working session for the Ad-Hoc Committee itself to discuss the series of charrettes that we had last week in which we, over the period of three nights, reviewed a set of concept drawings for the plans, for the potential plans for the seminary. And we still have a number of things to discuss, so we're going to be going over those tomorrow. And I'm happy to say that although I will be leaving as Chair, David Cohen will be taking over the Ad-Hoc Committee. And I'm sure it's going to run really well. So, thanks.
Thank you, Ms. Alman. As Gail just said, she is doing the unthinkable and she is retiring from the Planning Board after 20 years. It doesn't, it really just doesn't seem possible that we'll go on without her. She's been such a stalwart, involved in everything that's gone on here, and good ideas, a sympathetic ear for the audience. It's an amazing performance. It's our custom as a board to present a resolution of appreciation when someone retires. And let me tell you, this is very hard for me to read at this point, but let me see if I can do it. This is, "Whereas Gail M. Alman has served the Regional Planning Board of Princeton and the Princeton Planning Board from January 1st, 1999 to March 31st, 2019. And whereas Gail began her adventure in planning as a member of the Site Plan Review Advisory Board and the Princeton Environmental Commission, it was serving on these advisory boards where Gail's interest in the community provided her with opportunities to ensure Princeton's continued growth and expansion while addressing the needs of a constantly evolving community. And whereas Gail has been more than just a Planning Board member during her tenure, she's been the Board's Vice Chair, Chair of the Master Plan and Landscape Committees, and most recently Chair of the Ad-Hoc Committee to review and recommend the Princeton Theological Seminary's redevelopment project. Gail's committed vision of the Princeton community has provided critical insight in creating many of the policies in place today. And whereas under Gail's long-time participation in the various committees, and the Master Plan, thereby Princeton has benefited through the adoption of numerous amendments and new elements that are guiding the community through the 21st century and beyond. And whereas Gail's dedication to planning and her deep understanding of the Princeton community has provided an insightful approach in reviewing of development applications as well as establishing policies for regional and community planning. And therefore be it resolved that a copy of this resolution be forwarded to Mayor Elizabeth Lempert and the Princeton Council and the Princeton Planning Board to recognize the service Gail Alman has provided the Princeton community. And therefore let it be resolved that the Princeton Planning Board offers its sincerest gratitude to Gail M. Alman and offers its sincerest thanks to her for her knowledge, contributions, and dedication, and extends our very best in all future endeavors this 21st day of March, 2019."
You'll be happy to hear that I haven't prepared a long speech.
(inaudible)
Three minutes. You would know. So, but I thank you all. It's been a, and we all say this when we leave, but it's been a pleasure to serve in this group. Both the camaraderie in a sense of my colleagues, which has been incredibly special. But the task of the Planning Board is so central to the town that decisions are made, are affected by and affect not just the buildings, but the sociological sections of town, the economic sections of town. In all ways, it's the heart of the community. And it's a great honor to have been involved in that and to, and to have worked with all of you on that. So, thank you very much. (applause) And this.
You will leave next week.
Thank you, Kate.
Well, it seems a little mundane to move on to the minutes after this special occasion. I'm going to actually have to recuse myself from this set of minutes because this is the one establishing the Special Committee for the Theological Seminary Redevelopment. So, maybe I can ask Ms. Alman to do that one.
Yes, this is the minutes of the special meeting on Thursday, September 27, 2018, regarding the creation of the, what was it?
Ad-Hoc Committee.
Yeah, it was, I guess it was the whole, it was the whole determination of whether the, we would go ahead with the, with the recommendation that we have a redevelopment project. So, do I hear any corrections for the...
I was going to move to accept the minutes.
I just want to note, I gave Eileen just a couple of things. There was a typo and a missing word. She has them. Nothing substantive. And if David moves them, I'll second it.
And David?
I did move them.
All right. Do I hear a move to approve?
Yes, so moved.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved.
Okay. Thank you very much. That brings us to this evening's discussion item. This is an ordinance referral. It's age three, affordable housing, and it's residential zone. You all should have a memo from Michael La Place regarding this, and I'm going to ask Mr. La Place to cover it.
And Madam Chair, I can just interject. After discussion with our Board Council, I would like to inform the Board that I need to recuse myself for now for this item.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. What we have this evening is a referral from the Municipal Council for your consideration, a rezoning of a section of the current S2 Zone. It's the location, the site is at 900 Herrentown Road. It's about, it's just off, it's east of 206. It's bounded by Herrentown Road, Mount Lucas Road, and Old Orchard Lane. The proposal is to create a new residential zone, the Affordable Housing 3 Zone, AH3. And this would be to provide standards to construct 100% inclusive affordable housing complex on this site. In 2017, this Board approved a site plan for a two-story, 25,000-square-foot office building on this site. And since that time, based on market conditions, the property owner has reported to us that there really is very little demand for office in this area, that the site doesn't seem feasible for that particular use. And subsequently, a developer had approached the property owner thinking that this would be a very good site and that there is demand for housing, particularly affordable housing in this area. So that's why the proposal came before the municipality. It is consistent with the goals of the recent, the 2017 reexamination report of the Master Plan, which calls for looking at additional opportunities for creating affordable housing in Princeton and to have them in different sections of the town. I don't know if you have any, want me to go into specific details about the site itself? The proposed complex that the zoning would allow is for a 65-unit building, a mix of one, two, and three-bedroom apartments. The site would have onsite parking at a ratio of 1.1 cars per unit. The drainage is very similar to the drainage system that was approved for the site when it was the previous or current, actually, office building, site plan complex that was approved in 2017. Some of the adjoining uses, so you know, there's a medical complex to the north across Herrentown Road, office buildings to the west going towards Route 206, and residential to the south and to the east.
Okay. Are there questions for Michael on this? Go ahead.
I just wanted to suggest you might want to talk a little bit about the access and egress to the site, since that was something that was revised a little bit upon introduction as compared to what the plan you're showing.
Yes. Thank you. That was a point that came up during the discussion of the introduction of the ordinance before the Council. The initial concept plan, as you can see here, shows one access point onto Herrentown Road. The thought being, that's very similar to what was approved for the office site plan approval. And the idea was to be consistent with that because the access point for vehicles would be far from the residential adjoining properties. But then the Council members were concerned that a site should probably have more than one access point, and that perhaps it would make sense to possibly have vehicular access off of Mount Lucas Road in addition to Herrentown. And not only for convenience and good circulation onsite, but also for safety and emergency access to the site. So that was one, that was one aspect that was tweaked from the original concept of the ordinance, not to have just one access point for vehicles, but to perhaps have more than one, to have a second one onto Mount Lucas.
Yes, go ahead, Ms. Alman.
Michael, is it still, is the decision still that it will be a two-story building?
No, sorry, I didn't go into detail about that. The 65 units would be housed in an L-shaped building, which is the concept that fits under the proposed zoning. And this concept shows the three-story section, which is pretty much parallel to Old Orchard Road along the southerly side of the lot. And then to the northwest, along the westerly side of the lot of the site, towards the office buildings, this would be a four-story section, a wing.
And what is the setback from the back of the building down to the residences on Orchard? I mean, how many?
Yeah, there's, from the back wall of this wing, which is parallel to Old Orchard Lane, to the property line is about 80 feet from the wall to the property line. And then this is, we did a measurement from this back corner, proposed corner of the property to the closest residential structure on Old Orchard Lane. And that measurement's about 141 feet from this corner to this first house.
Thank you.
In the row.
And there's a 25-foot buffer to the parking from the property line?
This planted area along here. Some of the other changes we made in the conceptual site plan that were based on comments we heard at a neighborhood meeting that we held in the neighborhood on February 18th. We flipped the parking so that headlights would be facing the new project and not facing out towards the neighbors. The building was shifted closer to Herrentown Road and away from the residential zones. And we tried to put in more landscaping. And the developer was also agreeable to augmenting landscaping even outside the property, along there to add to the buffering effect.
I'm just curious, are there any streams? I know that there's a stream somewhere in that area, but I don't know. It's like crossing this site.
Part of Van Horn's Brook?
I'm not aware of one on the site. I know that basically this is a large detention base in there on the corner.
I have some other, in some ways, some general questions. And maybe they're procedural. And again, bear with me, I'm new at this.
I think I'm newer.
I noticed that attached to the actual proposal for the zone, there are these other pages that are there that reference, that reference some rules and regulations. Is that also, is that going to be part of the ordinance? And why, and I'm just not sure, I'm not sure that that's, I'm wondering why that's necessary. And again, if I were, you know, a developer, I'd come in, I'd go to the correct department and see them, and then I'd develop them, and I'd just use the rules and regulations as they exist now. So, one of the things seem to be is, I'm wondering why there's a necessity to have those, the other rules and regulations that are attached. How does this, how is this unique from any other project that, any other project that was, that would be affordable housing? That's, that's one of the questions. And if you think that this is necessary, I do have some questions specifically about the references to some of the rules that you have here.
Well, to answer your question, basically, our planning consultant that's been working on affordable housing projects, in addition to our council that's been working on this, our affordable housing initiatives for the town, thought that this should be as, you know, have as much detail as possible. So that's why it's in the draft ordinance. I really can't speak specifically to why it's in there. I think it was just trying to be as specific about the site as possible. I don't know if our Board Council wants to elaborate on that, if you think this is too detailed, or if there's sections that aren't necessary. I agree with you, that does go into more detail than many ordinances do.
Yeah, I think it's a good level of detail, May.
I didn't hear.
I think it's a good level of detail.
Well, but how is it any different from any, from any other application that would be made by a developer? They'd still have to go through these, I mean, the rules already exist, and they still have to comply with the rules anyway. Is this, is this something that normally happens when someone, a developer?
I don't think it normally happens to this level of detail in every case, but I would remind you that this is, this is an independent, private proposal. It doesn't involve public land or any public investment. And the developer has seen this ordinance and is comfortable with it. So, I think we've kind of jumped that hurdle already in that the developers had input and has seen this.
If I could just jump in for a second, I think that there's a sense that we've got fairly high density on this lot, a level that probably wouldn't be approved without significant controls over how that density was to be implemented. So I think, I think that's the more direct answer to your question, is there, there was a sense with this level of density that we needed to have more controls than a typical zone would have.
No, no, but these, these are just, I mean, these are, these are UHAC rules. I mean, these are just generally rules that you, most of them are just general rules that would apply to any project that has affordable, affordable housing. So, I'm, again, I don't see how there's...
It's a slightly different project because it's 100% affordable. So I think they just wanted to make sure that it would continue to be used for 100% affordable housing, and it would match UHAC standards. And I think they erred on the side of specificity, you know?
Okay. Well, I do have, I do have some other comments about, about those. If, do you want to do that now, or?
Go ahead.
Okay. At several points, you reference COA. And I, and I think the better reference would have been, it should be to the Fair Housing Act, or to any rules and regulations adopted by COA, or any successor agency to implement the purposes of the act. The reason why I'm saying that is, no one knows who COA is anymore. So, that kind of, but, you know, so I don't, so I think, I think it would be better if you referenced it that way. I went to... If you look at, if you look at...
Alvin, I'm sorry. What section were you just reading from?
Yeah, I think it was the first.
Michael's eleven.
Oh, it's, oh, I'm sorry.
Your actual ordinance?
Okay.
The ordinance.
I see.
Well, which I'm coming to. See, if you look at one on page three, "Applicable Regulations of New Jersey Council on Affordable Housing and Shall Be Deed Restricted," and it, again, it references UHAC, but I still, I'm thinking that what you want to do, particularly there, is again, you wanted to expand that to the Fair Housing Act, and reference COA, and also the successor agency to implement the purposes of that, of that particular act. And my reason, again, my reason for saying that is, COA is so, you know, nothing's happening much, nothing happening much at COA. And what if, in fact, there is some successor agency? Or, so that, that was my suggestion there. If you look down page four, and there's C, deed restriction period, I find this, I find that whole paragraph confusing. I think generally what the idea is, is that there's a, there's a period, there's a deed restriction period. Could be 30 years, could be 99 years. And then, and then the municipality generally has an option to see whether that restriction period could, could be extended. I don't, I'm just saying, I'm not sure I, it seems to say that if, if after 30 years, if there are any rents that are above 80% of the median, then they are no longer covered by the affordable, you know, a deed restriction. And those, but if I, which seems then to say that, well, if they're not, then maybe, maybe they are. And I just, I find it confusing.
Yeah, I think rightfully so. And I think your points are well taken. And I've talked to Michael about this. What I would suggest at the end of the first sentence after 580- hyphen 26.1 at sec, which is the Uniform Housing Affordability Controls, but that the affordability control period shall be at least 30 years. That's consistent with UHAC, as you know. I would take out the next two sentences. I think the first of those two sentences is actually internally inconsistent. It says vacant unit, and then the occupant of the vacant unit. And that last sentence is completely inconsistent with UHAC, so...
Now, and the other thing I'd say generally, if there are references to, to UHAC, I think there should also be references to the municipality's affordable housing ordinance. They're largely consistent, but there, but there's certain other things in some of the ordinances that, that are not in UHAC.
Now, subsection D2 above that actually does refer specifically to the Affordable Housing Ordinance. That's not sufficient, you don't think?
Okay. Since it's there, since it's general, okay. Now, the other thing is, if you go to page five, I take it whoever the developer is, is the owners, they're going to maintain, it's private. So they're going to, they're going to maintain the ownership of it.
Yeah, right, that's my understanding.
Yes, that's correct.
Administrative agent.
I would take out the language "selected by the developer." That's really unusual.
That was, that was what was kind of concerning me, too. Yeah, I mean, you know, I mean, obviously, yeah. That was, that was concerning me.
The way it works, I mean, the municipality has to designate an administrative agent, and that's the person that's assigned all these tasks.
Yeah. And it's, and I guess it's fine if the developer has one, and they want, and they want to recommend it. That's, you know, I don't, I think that's, that's fine, but...
Are you suggesting that you take, that everything in that sentence, starting with "selected," and they have to be taken out? That's what I would recommend.
That's, yeah, that's fine.
And that does give flexibility of the kind you just described.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Again, it's kind of, it may be nitpicking, but I don't see it right now. There was, they were talking about minimum floor areas.
Yes.
And it said 600, but actually, it varies depending on, depending, what's in the ordinance varies depending, depending on if it's a one, one-bedroom unit, if it's a two-bedroom unit. So, want completeness, I think you may want to, want to use the other. It's in the, it's in the township. It would be in the township ordinance. 600, I believe, was for a one-bedroom.
Well, I mean, I don't think you can build a two- or three-bedroom apartment in 600 square feet. So, I mean, I think it's good it's in there. A lot of ordinances don't have any number at all, and it's up to the developer. It's good to have a baseline figure set up in there. And then, at site plan, you can always, I mean, look at it again when they come in with the bedroom counts, and there's a fully developed thing. But, I mean, you can't build a three-bedroom, 200, 600-square-foot unit.
No, but, but there was a minimum, there was a minimum floor area for a three-bedroom unit.
There is.
Which is, yeah, which is larger than, than just the...
I'm just guessing that part of this was to give the developer some flexibility to build 65 affordable units on a small site, you know, and make it work. But...
You don't want to be, you don't want to be too small a lead either, you know?
No, I agree. I agree.
I actually think, and I can't point you exactly where it is in the ordinance, but there is a reference somewhere in this ordinance that, you know, other sections of the... the zoning ordinance will apply to this lot as well unless there's a conflict between the two, in which case the regulations in this section will prevail. But I think that, so for instance, there would not be any conflict between another section of the ordinance that stipulated minimum apartment sizes for larger apart, for apartments with more bedrooms. So that could still control, given the language that I recall being included. And if I could ask Derek, Derek, the, the town affordable housing ordinance does have minimum square footage for two bedroom and three bedroom?
I, I, the former borough didn't, I would have to defer to Alvin, he, the township, I think, does, I'm not aware.
Okay, so those, those would, those would, I think, I think David is right, those would still apply. Yeah.
Do you know what the size is off the...
Top of my head, right?
Sorry, just curious.
I, I think they actually went up to something like 1,200 feet for, for, like a three bed, I think that's, so.
That's a good point.
If you want to know, I mean, I'd, okay.
Just curious, I was...
Anyway, those are, those were my comments.
Yes, question was whether I got Mr. McGowan's comments, and, and I have.
Yes.
Ms. Alman?
Yeah, I, there was one more, Alvin reminded me, I had one more thing. On page six, section F, I was delighted to see building construction shall utilize green building or sustainable building methods, and then came the Weasley words, "to the extent practicable to reduce the operating and maintenance cost burdens of low and moderate income households." Can we take out "to the extent practicable" and just make it a rule that we require green building methods when we're building affordable housing, especially if it's 100% affordable housing? It seems to me both sensible in terms of what we think about, of how houses should be built, but especially in cases where we're building them for people of, of lesser means, where the savings over time matter more than the upfront costs. You okay with that?
Totally agree.
Definitely support that.
I, I would, I would second that, thank you and Gail for bringing that up. I think that also, you know, apart from the savings in terms of energy, which, you know, I think that, you know, that could be potentially transferred to the people living there, but also for, from the health perspective, you know, green buildings are healthier. And so, yeah, I, I would strongly recommend, you know, taking out to the full, to the extent possible, because that kind of leaves, you know, room to, sorry.
Senator, I can't hear you.
Sorry, yeah, no, so I, I just wanted to say that I agree with Gail, I think that that's great that she brought that up, and I, I think that, you know, we should also kind of think about green building from a health perspective as well for the people that live there. And I also wanted to, you know, suggest that maybe we should be also requiring, you know, parking for EV charging in, in the ordinance, and also potentially some language about solar. I see some flat roofs on that building, hopefully there'll be some opportunity for solar as well.
So, I'm going to make two comments, or one, I guess I'll pose more as a question for Jerry, which is, as member of council, we're constantly reminded that once an ordinance has been introduced, you can't make substantive changes without having to reintroduce the ordinance. And so I think that there's got to be some consideration of which of these changes are considered substantive or not, because from a timeframe standpoint, we really don't have time to reintroduce the ordinance and have another period. Okay, the standard actually is whether the changes are substantial, not, not substantive, and substantial is judged in terms of the entire document. I don't think they are, but certainly with respect to the points about the affordability controls that Alvin and I talked about, certainly one can make the argument that those are substantial. I would say they're not, but, but maybe we could suggest it and then let the, the municipal attorney call that one. And I, I, and then my second comment is that I specifically discussed some of these ideas about sustainability with the municipal attorney, and she said she had concerns because of the regulations that bar municipalities from requiring, make, placing requirements on affordable housing, and that would increase the cost. And she thought that some of, you know, having really prescriptive language about, about sustainability improvements might violate that. So, Jerry.
Can, can I piggyback on, on Dave's comment? First time anybody's ever said that I have a soft voice. Can you hear me now? Um, I, I just think since it's going to be 100% affordable, you have to remember that, you have to remember you're not going to get market rents, it needs, they're going to be paying what they can, what they could afford. So, I'm wondering if, if, and that's how, if practical helps, because if, again, as Dave is saying, if you start to add costs to what, what the building's going to be by having those, then it's going to be, you can't sustain it, you're not going to be able to, if you have to sustain the building on, on the cost of the rents, then this may have an impact on that. So that's the one caution I'd also offer.
I just wanted to add that if you build it sustainably on the front end, it's actually substantially less expensive to maintain it. And I think there are many examples across the country now of affordable housing that's being built for the same amount with sustainability concerns, and many of the, our residents here in Princeton have given us excellent examples, and I don't think that people who are living in affordable housing units should be stigmatized, and I think that they, the health considerations are significant, and I think that residents of affordable housing deserve the same quality of building standards.
I agree 100%. It's a question of what we can do.
Well, so Jerry and I have had conversations about this offline in terms of, not this specifically, but, you know, in terms of incorporating green building into the zoning ordinance, and there is precedent in other towns, in North Brunswick, they, I guess, required it for some of their zones. So I think that this is something that, you know, we can use precedent for.
Yeah, I, I agree. I'm sure that the wording that appears in the, the state legislation was created by the builders who are contemplating inclusionary housing amongst their own, in which they would then walk away and leave the, the cost of maintenance heat to their tenants. This is a case in which we may have a little more control. I don't think we can, if we can't under the law enforce it, I think we can certainly make it a standard for us, and if somebody wants to fight us on it, we can give in gracefully, but I would much rather see us be pretty firm in the document.
And, and I would add to that, I would add to that, that the way the language is worded, it's pretty general, and I think it's not that we've set forth a set of, of standards and techniques that have to be complied with. So even by taking out that language, it's not that, as I see it, that we've boxed in a developer, I think there's still a lot of flexibility. Michael, do you want to jump in?
Just, I just wanted to share some good news that I think will make this board feel a little better. In our preliminary discussions with the developer, they're very interested in doing a green building. They've talked about getting lead certification for the building, doing green roof, even green wall treatments, you know, as much landscaping as possible, so there's, I think there's already a vision there with the proposed development that, that it would be a green complex, just so you know that that's the perspective of the developer at this point.
And that, I'm glad to hear you say that, it doesn't surprise me because what I know of this developer, they're a, a, a lot better than average, I would say, when it comes to building integrity. And I would just also point out that the phrase maximum extent practicable has proved problematic in many laws related to land use, and it is just a, considered a giant loophole by the people that you just don't, to whom you don't want to give giant loopholes. So I, I think it's a very good idea to take that out and just make clear that we expect a high standard to be met.
And, and I also like to, I guess, re, re-say the, the whole term EV charging stations and having solar written into the ordinance as well. I think that, you know, EV charging sta- stations, people don't really kind of think about the necessity for that, but I think that that's going to be, you know, required in the future, so I think that we should include that language.
I agree with that also, and as somebody who drives at least a partial EV, it is so frustrating when you, when you get someplace and you can't charge overnight, and obviously people think of electric vehicles as being high-end expensive cars, that I'm just positive is going to change a lot in the coming years, and they're much, much cheaper to maintain than regular cars, and so I, I just think it's the responsible thing to do, and I also don't think that it costs a lot of money to put in those charging stations, it's not going to break anybody's bank, and maybe they're already planning on it with their green ethic.
Yeah, it's possible, but I, I, just, I guess, not to belabor this, but I think that, you know, especially in, in multi-family units like this, you know, it's impossible to own an electric vehicle, you know, without charging stations, because you can't plug it in anywhere, you don't have a garage to put it in. So it's, I think, really critical that we put that language into the ordinance.
I embrace whatever Jerry's comfortable with.
I'm sorry? You want to know what Jerry is comfortable with?
I said, I embrace whatever Jerry's comfortable with. Well, I, I would ask Michael in the second to jump in, see if he has any insight on that. I, I'm, I think that's fine, you know, what, what we don't know here sitting on the board is, is the dynamics between the developer and, and, and staff in terms of discussions, so we're, we're a bit limited, but I think Louise's point is well taken, it's not that expensive, and I, I would put it in, I don't think it is, that, I don't think that's a substantial amendment, and I think it's, and I think it's worth putting in it. Okay. Okay, anything else? Yes?
Couple of other things. I didn't notice, and maybe I missed it in the ordinance, any mention of bicycle accommodations? I think it's really important, given how many people commute on 206 on bicycles, that there be bike accommodations, and just looking at the plan, I also had some concern about where there would be outdoor space, either a playground or some play area for kids who live there. Right now, the only area of any size is a detention basin, which I hope can be rethought for other reasons.
It mentions a recreation space.
It does mention a playground and a...
It does, but, but there's nothing, there's no sign of it. I mean, it mentions a lot of things that are not going to be on this site, so I just wanted, maybe when the time comes...
Well, I would remind you that, I would remind you, this is a very preliminary concept design, so...
Right, so when the time comes...
This board will have that discussion.
Okay.
The, the, the two, yeah, this is the original, basically, or actually, it's, no, not the office building, this is the second version of the Affordable Housing Plan that the developer had generated, but it has not been updated to reflect even the changes that were made to the ordinance at the council meeting to permit egress onto Mount Lucas, and to, we actually lowered the, the parking requirement, and both of those things should allow for creation of a much, much more efficient site circulation layout, which will free up space for site amenities.
Right, but I think Louise is, is right that we should make sure that there's some sort of totlot or playground, and judging by the many discussions we've had, it should have some sort of fencing to keep small children from straying onto Mount Lucas in here in town.
If, if, if I could ask Michael a question, and I don't want to keep layering more expenses on the developer, but were there any discussions about central air conditioning? Because if this is not going to be centrally, central, have central air conditioning, unless everybody has a window unit, which is not very efficient, it's going to be very, very hot.
It says now through the wall.
They actually can go through the wall, they just can't project past the outside face of the, so you could have, you know, the type of units you have in hotels frequently where it's a through wall.
What did the, the developer propose?
I don't recall that that was discussed in detail. He is here tonight and might be willing to address a number of the comments that the board is making if...
Well, one of the things we probably should do, since we have a number of people who are interested in this here, is, is have a, a public portion of the meeting so that we can hear what the neighbors and others have to say about this, so let me open this up, and I know that Kate has said we have a three-minute rule, so you all know that you have about three minutes or so for each presentation. So if you'd come up to the microphone, get sworn in, and, jury says he's not going to swear people in, so, so, sorry, Kate.
Yeah, you don't, this is not a formal public, public hearing, so nobody has to be sworn in.
I don't want to hold it, thank you. I would like to preface my statement by thanking Gail for her years of service, and also, a lot of the things that I have to say have been covered, but I'm not smart enough on my feet to take it out of my statement, so it, some may be redundant, and also some may not actually belong at this hearing, but further when the developer comes, but, you know, tomorrow's not promised, so I'm just going to put it out there tonight. So first of all, thank you for the opportunity to speak with you this evening, I'll go, most likely go beyond my three minutes by only by the minute, so let me be clear that I'm speaking on my own behalf. However, my comments, concerns are drawn from my many years of involvement with the municipality's affordable housing programs, both in the former borough, as a member and chair of the Princeton Housing Authority, and currently as a member and chair of the Princeton Affordable Housing Board. Had the housing board had knowledge of this proposed ordinance prior to the introduction last week at the council's meeting, that knowledge was only acquired late in the afternoon on Monday and looking at the council's agenda, we certainly would have discussed the proposal as a board and likely come before you with a consensus agreement of concerns, suggestions, comments this evening. Far more important than the lack of the involvement of the housing board is the absence of a municipal employee's input, who in my humble opinion is undervalued for her expansive expertise in affordable housing planning and development, and that's Municipal Housing Manager Maureen Fullaway. Further, I fully support, and want to, want to reiterate this, I fully support the creation of this zone as a result in 65 100% affordable units, an extremely prized and rare occasion and opportunity. I'm not here in an attempt to stall or challenge its creation, I'm here to highlight some concerns I have with language or lack of. I've shared my concerns and comments with Councilman Williamson, as he is liaison to our board. Last week, thinking that I would not be here this evening, I was scheduled to attend another very important meeting concerning the future of our volunteer fire department. concerning the future of our volunteer fire department. My comments may be better shared in the development stage of the proposed development on Harrington Road, but I think it's important that you consider them at this stage. Turning your attention to page four, section four, one, multiple family rentals, in particular, the, with rents established, UHAC does not include parking and/or amenity fees. And there have been possible amenity fees mentioned later on page eight, in the calculation of rent, which can significantly add to the cost of affordable housing units, often making affordable units unaffordable. Private developers strictly adhere to the rules of UHAC in setting rents, as well as what is and what is not included in the rent calculation. However, it's my understanding that Princeton may include them as a condition of approval, so I'm planting that seed this evening. Jumping to page six, somewhat out of order, section four, two, A, off-street parking. As a point of concern regarding parking, I just wanted to share with you that in an Avalon, Princeton, very low-income studio apartment rents for $380 a month. Parking and amenity fees add $167 a month, resulting in an annual rent going from $4560 to $6564. And that's, that represents 44% of that household's rent. A moderate unit at Palmer Square rents for $930 a month with a parking fee, astounding parking fee of $190 a month, adding actually 2.5 months' rent for a household. And that parking represents 20% of that rent. These, these units often sit vacant because qualified renters cannot afford the additional parking fee, which renders these units unaffordable. We have, each month, we have a report on the units that are empty and the waitlist and things like that. And these particular units on Palmer Square, there's one that has been sitting empty for quite a while. I suggest some language here that specifies, consider parking in the AH3 zone not to be an added expense. If not here, then it certainly needs to be included in the developer's agreements to safeguard the affordability of these units. Such language was missing from the Copperwood Developments, Developers Agreement, and caused significant financial distress to affordable unit leaseholders when Copperwood faced its own financial problems and, that they had not anticipated, and passed this on to the leaseholders. Moving back to page four, permitting under deed restriction period, this is something Alvin touched upon. And further, I welcome and applaud the language, quote, "Only at such time that the municipality opts to reduce the unit from the requirements." This is currently missing from the Affordable Housing Ordinance, and as we learned from Avalon Bay Developer Agreement, it needs to be here. Within that same section, I believe the language regarding the removal of the rental rate restriction after 30 years negates the deed restriction in perpetuity should the municipality opt not to release out. That was something Alvin brought forward. So I ask you to take a closer look at that language. Further, in that same section, a restriction, a restricted unit shall remain affordable despite, one, a sublease or assignment. Please note that the Affordable Housing Board, the Affordable Housing Program, does not allow subleases or assignments, so you may need to look at that language. Page five, section four, two, E, Other Affordable Unit Requirements, talks about affirmative marketing requirements. There's very specific language that creates a regional preference, and I believe it needs to be added here. And that language is, the affirmative marketing plan shall provide a regional preference for all households that live and/or work in Region Four, comprised of Mercer, Monmouth, and Ocean Counties. From my research, Princeton is the only municipality in Mercer County not to have a regional preference, and they never did have such a preference. Again, all my comments are mine, and they do not represent any formal comments of the board. Thank you for your consideration and for allowing me to go over time.
Can you leave your comments or send your comments?
I do, I'll give them, I do have.
Thank you.
No. Just for the record, that was, that was Kate Warren. Anybody else that speaks, if they could give their name, we're not going to swear them in, but...
Good, good evening. My name is Carl Peters. I'm a planner, appearing here this evening on behalf of Mr. McLaughlin, lives on Old Orchard Lane. We're here tonight because the Planning Board has a responsibility to make recommendations with regard to how does a proposed land use ordinance fit within the master plan. Now, certainly, we understand that affordable housing is inherently beneficial use. But, in, that's in a vacuum. In your own master plan, and it talks about, in doing this review, you have to balance the need for affordable housing with other concerns, such as traffic, the environment, and neighborhood protection. Now, we've glossed over, I think, very lightly, the fact that this is 65 units on three acres of property. Where else do we have that? And why is this, almost 22 units per acre, what changed between when you did the fair, not you, the Planning Board, but when the municipality did the Fair Share Plan, which is on the municipal website, and calls for an S2 zone that's about 25 acres and has a density of six units an acre? So this proposal is more than three times what was in the Fair Share Plan. We have units in the R2 zone rather close to this development on Old Orchard Lane, which, that development is less than one unit per acre. We also, in terms of what your responsibilities are, you're supposed to apply standards that minimize and buffer impact on adjacent uses. I believe Mr. Cohen noted that this plan provides a 25-foot buffer zone. Well, current zoning provides a 50-foot buffer zone. So how is this protecting the people on Old Orchard Lane? In the ordinance, it also allows parking and drive-aisles within that buffer zone. I provided several charts here, and I know I have a few minutes, that indicate how this proposed use on one lot, not on the whole zone that was proposed in the Fair Share Plan. If you look at the first graph, which compares the maximum floor area ratio to a number of other township residential zones, you'll see on the far right in red is the FAR for this project. And you can see how it compares to the other R zones. And far over to the left is the R2 zone, which includes the two-story units on Old Orchard Lane. The next page shows the FARs in the former borough zone. Now, you'll note the R4 zones, such as on Jodden Street, which is pretty dense. And that's only about two-thirds the density that's proposed on this site. The density of a little less than 22 units per acre is far and above any of the other R zones in the former township. And in fact, with the exception of the former hospital site, it's a density greater than any of the zones in a former borough. And you'll notice on this chart in green, the MX zone is the former Stanworth property, which has, according to the zoning ordinance, a density of 14 units per acre. So this is more than 50% greater than Stanworth.
Excuse me, Carl. Do we have copies of that?
This is, I just...
Sorry, got stopped by the attorney.
Okay. And I'm sorry, I don't have page numbers on these because we've only had a few days to work on this. The other criteria that I looked at with regard to the intensity of the use on the site is impervious cover. Now, currently, the S2 use, which was approved for the office on Mr. Yedlin's property a couple of years ago, is much lower impervious cover than what's preferred on, proposed, rather, on the AH3 zone. In fact, the impervious cover for this zone is at the same level as for the Central Business District. Doesn't seem in keeping with protecting the neighborhood just to the south. You have one chart here which shows the, the buffer widths. We'll note that the current township buffer from multifamily to, to a single-family residential is 50 feet. In the Stanworth project, in the MX zone in the former borough, they have a 40-foot buffer. This proposal calls for 25. How does that protect the neighborhood? I also provided some aerial photographs of some of the other denser developments, including the Stanworth property in the MX zone. The MRR zone, where the hospital used to be, if you look at that area, you'd notice one thing that's conspicuously different than the rest. The middle of the property has a gigantic building. On Franklin Avenue, the scale is much smaller. Those houses are only two stories high. And I believe, although I was not here at the time, that that was done to respect the houses on the opposite side of Franklin Avenue. And that two-story type development, I believe, would be more in keeping with the neighborhood on Old Orchard Lane. I've also shown a couple of elevations. You see the elevation of the Avalon property on Witherspoon Street of four stories. Four stories is proposed for this site. That's very large, in my mind. The two-story on Franklin Avenue is a more compatible scale. We see four stories again. One of these is the Holfish North Development, which was 114 units on, I forget, about four or five acres. So that was more dense. But if you look at the facade on Paul Rose someplace, how is that four-story facade compatible with Old Orchard Lane? Now, we're not suggesting that there shouldn't be affordable housing on this site by any means. But we're saying that this proposal, and it's a pretty monolithic proposal, there's no variations in architecture or setback on this, it's not compatible with the neighborhood that's there already. It's too dense, it's too bulky, and it's of a scale that's intrusive on the neighborhood. It's not sensitive to the environment with the extensive impervious cover. What we would suggest is you can, you look at this and consider reducing the density. If you removed one floor, it'd be more consistent with the development at Stanworth. And that would create about 42 units on a three-acre site. You might accomplish that by taking one floor out and having the buildings facing Old Orchard Lane be two-story, and maybe the one that's closer to Herrington Road being a three-story building, not four-story here. By reducing the number of units, you'd reduce the parking size, parking demand, reduce the impervious cover. And you could have the opportunity to move the buildings a little bit further away from Old Orchard Lane and allow the neighbors to have their 50-foot buffer. And also, make sure that there's a dense buffer provided that's going to protect from noise and the impact of a very dense development, even if it's reduced in scale. The other things that could be intrusive on the neighborhood are balconies facing out onto Old Orchard Lane, the swimming pools, decks, patios, bars, B2 grills. And, you know, again, on this site, I don't know where you put those things because there's not a whole lot of vacant space. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Charles McVicker. My wife and I live in one of the units on Old Orchard Lane. We have lived in Princeton for 65 years. Satchel Paige said, "Getting old relates to mind over matter." He said, "If it, if you don't mind, it doesn't matter." But I have to say that this mind matters very much to me. If you'll indulge me, I'd like to tell you an early experience, earlier experience, that my wife and I've had. We've, we have lived in three homes in Princeton, one at a time. We built our first home on Prospect Avenue, a very nice little home for starting our family. And the nice thing about this block on Prospect Avenue and Riverside Road was that the center, it was a small block, and the center of the block had a forest, trees blooming. Every house on that block could look into that forest. Well, one year, one of the neighbors was retiring, I guess he needed the money. He sold the back half of his lot and enough room for a driveway to a builder, on which this builder was going to build a big house right in the middle of our forest. We'd actually built our house with the picture window facing there because of that scene. When the neighbors, when we discovered what was going on, we went to protest to the zoning board. And their answer was, "Well, you're a little too late. The builder has already put in a sewer line." So we lost that, that battle. So I think that business interests, and I don't know whether there was any politics involved, overpowered the lifestyle of everybody who lived on that block. To come up to the present day, we've lived here so long that when we moved here, Mount Lucas Road was a dirt road. And we used to take the dirt road out to the very nice lady who would service our sick cats. And that's about all the traffic that went on it. Well, now you have to admit that Mount Lucas Road has become 206 Junior. And sometimes, it's been alternate 206. And I, and it's a dangerous road. People speed on it. And at the corner of, of, well, the road that comes in from 206 there.
Herrington.
Herrington Road. That corner already is not safe. Because if you're trying to pull out from Herrington Road onto Mount Lucas Road, there's a sign right there for the medical facility that blocks your view of the traffic coming up. So the point I'm trying to make is that I hope that your board takes into consideration the lifestyle of everybody who lives on Mount Lucas Road. Because if you put this very large, overcrowded facility on that little corner lot with an unsafe corner and a medical facility across the street from it, it's going to become a very dangerous area. And a lot of Mount Lucas will be troubled by what's happening. So I, I'm just hoping that you can take the humanity that the neighbors deserve in this whole area into consideration when you're making your decisions on this plot. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hello. My name is Lauren Patron. I'm a resident of New Jersey, not necessarily the city. But as for the sustainability aspect of the buildings, I think that should definitely be, I like, I second the motion that you guys should take the language out that allows loopholes for that to be circumvented. Because in my opinion, that's a very big deal. And I think that eventually it'll become an accessory anyway. So it's better to just, like, I think you said, Ms. Olman, set the standard for having that become just standard practice as opposed to like, you know, have the loophole go in first and have you guys have to find it, and then pull it out, and then do the ordinance over it. Like, definitely, I just, as a, as a citizen, I just hope that you guys definitely are strict about that. Definitely give it the consideration. And, yeah, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you.
May I just add another comment? It has to do with something I read in there about the exterior walls should be fireproof materials. And I'd just like to bring your attention to Senator Weinberg's. There's a bill that she is cosponsoring or sponsoring. It has to do with light wood construction, has to do with sprinklers and crawl spaces, it has to do with masonry... it has to do with masonry, firewalls going up to the rooftop. And just a point that I learned last week at her town talk was that Avalon Bay is now voluntarily actually doing those things in the buildings. Of course, it's a much larger building we're talking about, but a four-story building here, you just might be aware of that and take a look at her legislation. Thanks.
Heidi Fichtenbaum, the vice chair of the Princeton Environmental Commission. And I'm actually concerned about one very specific clause, which I think limits the ability of the developer to do a number of things on this site. It's just below the bulk chart. It's the double asterisk that says, "The building design shall be required to incorporate a three-story component that will encompass the east wing of the building along the south side of the site." And the reason I'm concerned with that is because it codifies the plan that you're looking at up on that board. And I don't know whether all of you have seen a sketch that I worked on for this site, and I only have a few of them, but I'll put them up there. And I don't want to suggest that this is the only way to do it, but it is one way to do it. And it has a number of benefits. It pulls the building closer to the street fronts. And if you keep this clause in the ordinance, it sort of prevents you from doing that. Pulling the building closer to the streets pulls it further away from the Old Orchard Lane building, homes, which is a real benefit to them because not only do they have the buffer space, they have parking, which is, you know, just at the surface of the ground, so it's not tall. And then there's also this open sort of community space, which is protected by the building from the roadway and might be an ideal location to allow the developer to incorporate the required recreation space. There's a 1,500 minimum area that is required in the ordinance. I don't really see where it fits in that plan. It is also required that that recreation space for children provide playground equipment that's also in the ordinance. And so by sort of making the ordinance so inflexible, it really doesn't allow you to do something like this. And I think that this has a lot to recommend it from the standpoint of the neighbors and pulling the project further away from them. It really allows the people who live in the development to have a nice protected green space for their children. And it allows the buildings to address the street and clarifies the link to the transportation pathways that already exist, whether that's public transportation along 206 or bike and pedestrian transportation up Mount Lucas, all these sustainability things that we want to promote. In addition to that, I actually had a solar, a preliminary solar study done on the site. And I looked at the current plan that's up on the board versus this plan. And it's pretty stark. You can have 60% of the building has solar access if you do this little sketch that I passed around. And it has 25% solar access if you do it this way. So giving the developer a little bit more flexibility could reap a number of benefits that are both environmental as well as beneficial for the adjacent neighbors. And so I would really encourage you, because I know that there have been a number of tweaks that have been made tonight, to consider removing that statement. Or at least only requiring that three-story element if it is within, you know, that 80 feet. But if they can pull it away from the Old Orchard Lane homes, that you give them the opportunity to pull together a plan that is something that would be beneficial to all. That's pretty much it, and I'm happy to share with you my solar studies as well. I do want to say that I really support getting this affordable housing built. From a sustainability standpoint, it's a must-have for Princeton. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, my name's Kevin Kavanaugh, and I represent RPM Development. We are the contract purchaser of the site. And I wanted to address, I'm never going to hit everybody's concerns, but I wanted to say largely that we're not trying to, we're trying to be good neighbors if we can make this whole thing work. And, you know, I know, I heard a lot of concerns about sustainability and building techniques and so forth. Our plan is to have this be LEED certified. In fact, we're going to be required by the state to build an energy-efficient building anyway. We tend to, I think our last 28 buildings have been LEED Gold and Better, so LEED Gold and Platinum. So that's, we're sort of a mission-driven, for-profit company, and that's one of the things that happens to be important for us. It's also important because it's in our financial best interests to build a really high-quality building now so that we can reduce our energy expenses during our operation of the building. There was some talk about deed restriction. This will be deed restricted by the state for 45 years anyway, if it is financed. And a lot of the, there's been a lot of talk about UHAC and, you know, there's also another set of regulations that is governed by the IRS and by the NJHMFA that mirror a lot of that UHAC was basically based on. And so there are a lot of concerns that are otherwise addressed somewhere else just in how we get these things financed. And I would say from certainly the tenor, and if not specifically, almost everything I heard about affordability controls and deed restrictions are going to be governed by federal law. So, you know, I know we're not going to be able to make everybody happy in doing this, but we're going to do our best. So if anybody has any specific questions about anything, I'd be happy to answer.
When you say these restrictions will be governed by federal law, are you talking about financing? That's because of the way it's financed?
Correct, yeah. So the primary vehicle for financing affordable housing in the US right now is low-income housing tax credits. And that is a section of IRS code that governs that. They like to, the IRS likes to brag that it's the largest section of code.
Yes, go ahead.
A question. So in terms of volume, like, is there a need to have 65 units in this development? Or does it matter if, like, you know, it's 30 or 100? Was 65 the number that you felt was needed in terms of needing some sort of tax credit stuff or?
It's the bottom end of an ideal size deal for us. But my understanding is that with limited development potential in Princeton, limited area for development, that this is a good opportunity to satisfy the overall co-obligation, is my understanding.
I know there were a lot of specific environmental suggestions that were made. One that I'd be curious in particular to know is, are you typically installing charging stations for electric vehicles in your projects?
We haven't been, rideshare partnerships have been a little more effective for us. But to somebody's point, I think maybe yours, typically the cost of ownership of an electric vehicle is prohibitive for this particular group of tenants. I know those costs are coming down. We have no problem installing a few stations. It's not a problem. So.
If I may ask, would you object then to the references to UHAC and to the minimum of 30 years and thereafter until terminated by the municipality? I understand that technically, low-income housing tax credit projects are exempt from UHAC. But in my experience, a number of them use the UHAC form deed restriction, in any event, which is the 30 years and thereafter.
Right, yeah. And as far as I know, and I don't, I think that that is part of, or will be part of the Fair Share settlement. And I think that's the origin of the language, is that it's going to be in a settlement agreement with Fair Share. And so why not make them align?
You mean the 30 years and thereafter?
UHAC in general, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, I know. I mean, I've done a lot of work with Fair Share, and they always insist upon that.
Yeah. And in case anybody was confused, I do support the project.
Mr. Kavanaugh, would you mind coming back just for a second? Just in terms of the charging station then, would you have any objections if we put in the requirement? Would there be at least one?
No.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, anyone else?
Can I just ask for a clarification? Someone said that this was the 100% affordable ordinance. Is this in any way going to take away the Mirror Zone and the R4 over on Maple Franklin?
No.
Okay, so it's unique unto itself.
Right.
Thank you. Okay, thank you.
Anyone else? Let me close the public portion then. Done a lot with language and suggestions and so on, but this is at the planning board for, and what we're looking for is, first of all, consistency with the master plan, which is the reason these ordinances go to council, come to us, and go back to council. And so I think we should say whether or not we find this ordinance consistent with the master plan and whether or not this very suggestions that everyone has made will make it more consistent, better.
So I think Jerry might have something to say about that, that our charge is a little different this time?
Well, that's what the.
Well, I know, I've talked to Eileen about it, and there's language in, as I understand it, not the master plan itself, but the reexamination report. Michael, maybe you could comment on that, and in the master plan? Okay.
There's language about affordable housing and developing more affordable housing in Princeton in both the last master plan and this 2017 reexamination report. The most recent reexamination report sort of sets the goal that we should be pursuing more and additional sites for affordable housing, and that this should be throughout the community. So that's really what this is in the spirit of, the reexamination report, the goals are set forth there.
All right. Further comments on the ordinances as it stands?
I don't have further comments on the ordinance, although I do agree with Ms. Fichtenbaum's comment about flexibility. So if that, I mean, flexibility for making the whole thing better, including better for neighbors. So if it's not, if it's not a substantial substantive, whatever is the right term, to omit that double asterisk footnote, I think that would be a good thing to do. And I have just a few comments about, I guess you could put them in the general basket of consistency with the master plan and with smart growth principles. Would you rather me not say that until after we take a vote, or is now a good time? Now is a good time? When I first saw this site, felt, oh goodness, is this the right place? You know, it's at the edge of town. I was sympathetic to people who get the Walkable Princeton emails, and it says there's a walkability score of 15. But when you look at it in the context of a corridor that is actually part of a development node, it is walkable within a mile to a wonderful park, employment destinations, public transit, and small-scale shopping destinations. I think it's going to be really important for us, if this is an anchor, which I think it is, for looking, for additional housing in this area, that it's going to be really important to look at complete streets treatment for that section of 206, provide for pedestrian and bike safety. Right now, you'd have to bike or walk on the path. It's a little bit longer route, more circuitous route to get to CVS or to the bus stop or any number of other destinations. But I think that it could be sort of a stake in the ground for some really important, really positive changes, both to the geometry and, you know, multimodal treatments along 206, but also to zoning to allow for more mixed uses, to allow for additional housing adjacent to existing commercial. So I think that, you know, that's what got me comfortable with this after some reflection and some Google Map examinations and stuff, and distances between two points, sorts of things. So when the time comes and we're looking at specifics on the site, where the kids can play, and I'll be very interested in connections to new. can play, and I'll be very interested in connections to nearby, but that's for another day. And so thanks for giving me an opportunity to just put out a few of those thoughts at this time.
Thank you. Yes, Shannon?
So Louise, you took all my thoughts. I was going to say the same thing. Yeah, no, I feel like, you know, there was a lot of immediate reaction, I guess maybe in the blogosphere against this, because there's high-density, low, I guess, or affordable housing on the fringe of town, which, you know, that's not necessarily what we want to be doing here in town. But I think that, to Louise's point, I think that this could be a stake in the ground in that part of town. And, you know, it could be redesigned to be actually a pretty nice place. I think, you know, that's going to require some better long-range planning in terms of envisioning what could happen there. But I think that there's a lot of potential. I also think that, you know, we need to, I mean, think about the master plan. I think, you know, to the point about consistency with the master plan, I think that, you know, it's fuzzy, because I think that, you know, our master plan kind of has these broad concepts and, you know, smart growth this, and, you know, equity and all that. But it doesn't get into specifics. And, you know, I've had conversations with other people about the need for, you know, a master plan, an updated master plan that gets more specific about these types of things. And, you know, that way we can kind of, in the future, point to what the master plan says, and specifically say that that's what it is. Because I think that, you know, you can argue one point, like the planner over there, saying that it's completely inconsistent. And then, you know, you can also say that, you know, the reexamination report sort of says that it is consistent. So I think that that's something that we need to look at kind of very seriously here on the board. And also in terms of transportation, this doesn't seem like, you know, something directly related to this, but I think it does have major implications in terms of the bus route. And I think that, you know, if you look at the bus route, it kind of does this kind of weave before it gets into downtown Princeton. And if we want to actually make this smart growth and transit-oriented development, we need to kind of, the municipality needs to be talking with NJ Transit to potentially have better bus routes, so, better bus routes, so that way people can actually take the bus instead of driving everywhere. So, yeah, I'm not going to talk too much longer, because I know that we have to get going, but that's my thought.
Okay.
Just one additional thought about the bus. I don't know whether NJ Transit ever does this, but I think it would make a lot of sense to relocate the bus stop that's right next to the Sunoco with not a single, there's no sidewalk. This is just stuck there. I know it's there, because I worked really hard to get it there, but you can't get to it. It's really terrible. And, you know, maybe they'd be willing to relocate it onto the Princeton side of the intersection, make it much more accessible to not just the people who will live here, but existing neighborhoods, including Griggs Farm, with safer, you know, ways to get across the street. So it's just something to think about.
All right. Any further comments, Joey?
Yeah, just a couple of things. I thought maybe it would be worthwhile going through all the changes people suggested, and we could get a consensus from the board on the ones they want to keep in and ones they don't want to keep in. In terms of consistency with the master plan, I think it is consistent. We might want to say, and this would be unusual, that if the council chooses, it could also add that, to the extent that it is not consistent with the master plan, the reason we are doing this is X, Y, and Z, and lay that out. And if there's a, if there were a determination of inconsistency by the board, and I'm not recommending that, when it goes back to council, the ordinance would have to be approved by a majority of the fully authorized membership. And the reasons for adopting it, in spite of the inconsistency, would have to be set forth, as I recall, I think it's in the resolution and in the minutes. So the council might want to consider doing that, but I leave that to council and council attorney. But this way you're kind of covering all bases, because as Mr. Peters did, you could certainly argue the opposite proposition, that it's not consistent with the master plan. So I think this just, it gives added protection here. In terms of the ordinance provisions, if I could run through them, in terms of page two, the elimination of that footnote, footnote two, does everybody agree that that's worthwhile? Just consensus? Okay. And then on page three, as per Alvin's comments, I would add in one, multi-family affordable housing, rental development, family units, all dwellings constructed in this district shall be creditworthy pursuant to the, I would put, Fair Housing Act, comma, applicable regulations, accounts on affordable housing, or its successor agency. So that's what I would add there. Everybody okay with that?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Then on the next page, and these are the only ones where I think one could really make an argument, I would not agree with it, but make an argument that these are substantial. Bottom of page four, C deed restriction, at the end of the first sentence where you have five colon eighty hyphen twenty-six point one at sec, I would add, but the affordability control period shall be at least thirty years, and that's what UHAC says. I would then take out the next two sentences, which really are inconsistent with, well, first of all, the first sentence after that is kind of internally inconsistent. It talks about a vacant unit, and then talks about the occupant in the unit. So I would take out that sentence and the sentence thereafter, because they are inconsistent with the idea that the controls are going to remain in effect until the municipality releases them. What's everybody feel about that? Everybody okay with that?
Okay, that's, you're taking it out to what point?
I would take it out until the last sentence that reads, restricted rental unit shall remain. So I would leave that in, but I would take out, as Ms. Warren indicated, the first point under that, a sublease or assignment of the lease by the unit, since that, of the unit, since that's not permitted. So those are the two changes. Adding the language in the text of C at the end of the first sentence, taking out the next two sentences, and then taking out paragraph number one. Everybody okay with that?
This was, I didn't hear, I'm sorry.
You want me to go over that? I'm sorry.
I just didn't hear you on which two sentences.
It's the second and third sentences. The sentence that starts, the affordability control shall remain in effect.
Oh, yes.
And then the next sentence, which reads, if at any time after the end of thirty years.
Yeah.
Okay? Okay, everybody okay with that? Then, if I got this right from Ms. Warren, in E, after affirmative marketing, I think she suggested, and I think it's a good idea, which shall include a preference for the residents of, it would be Coa Region Four. And that's Mercer, Monmouth, and Ocean Counties.
That's right.
And then, page six, F, take out to the extent practicable, add an H, which says at least one EV charging station shall be provided. Now, I know, Shannon, you suggested, you mentioned solar. I think that's covered, kind of covered by green building or sustainable building materials. So I don't know if we want to, I don't know if we want to add anything specifically about solar. That might be getting too specific. What do you think?
Yeah, I guess I can't speak to, you know, whether that should be specifically called out right now, but, I mean, I guess it's fine. I think that, I mean, hopefully that'll be the case.
Right. So we have that deletion of the language, to the extent practicable, in F and a new H. Everybody okay with that? And that's it.
Anything else? Anyone? You've heard the list of comments. Does anyone feel that they'd like to make a motion at this point? Anyone? No?
I guess I'll motion.
Well, I'll move. The, how do I phrase it? Our agreement that this ordinance with recommended changes does conform to the master plan, and that it can be forwarded to the council with that endorsement.
And with those changes... It's consistent with the master plan as annotated by the reexamination report of 2018.
Seventeen. Was that a second?
Sure.
All right. Is there further discussion? All right. Would you call the roll, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Texarney?
Yes.
Mrs. Ullman?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunnin?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
All right, thank you. And thank you very much.
I'm sorry, Jerry. I'll just get to more morning.
If we can, yeah, she's going to do the next one. So if you can.
What? Mandarin?
She'd rather do it. There's some other things we should talk about in that thing.
Okay, if we can, let's see. If we can change attorneys and move up to the next hearing. This hearing this evening is Barang Educational Foundation Incorporated. It's a minor site plan with conditional use. It's nine, nineteen, and twenty-nine Lambert Drive, block eighty-one oh two, lots one, eleven, and twelve. And I think Mr. LePlace is ready to sort of walk us through what's involved in this, if you would, please?
And Mr. LePlace, before you start, I'll just note that the noticing is in order, and the board has jurisdiction tonight.
That is correct.
And I will swear you in for your testimony this evening. Do you swear from your...
I'm staff.
Well, that's been the practice of the board.
Has it? Oh, I've never been sworn in before, okay.
If you'd raise your right hand, sir, do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
I do.
Thank you.
All right. This is, the property in question is the campus of the Princeton International School of Mathematics and Science. It is located on a seventeen point two-six acre site in the easterly section of the community. The site is bounded by, it's, the access for the one driveway front entrance is off of Lambert Drive, and that's also bounded by Rosedale Avenue. Lambert Drive wraps around the site and other adjoining residential properties, and comes back out to Rosedale Road, if you're familiar with that area of the town. The proposal is, as the chair has stated, for amended conditional site plan. The planning board had granted site plan approval and conditional use approval in the past for an enrollment of eighty-two students when this was the American Boy Choir School. And the latest approval was for that amount of students in 1996. And what's before you now is a request to increase the enrollment by thirty-eight students to a hundred and twenty students on the site, and for, also for three additional faculty. There are no physical changes to the site that are contemplated, no new buildings, no expansion of buildings, no new impervious surface in terms of such things as parking areas. The proposal, the applicant has stated in the submitted materials that there is no additional parking demand created by the increased enrollment. So that's why there aren't any other physical changes to the site. Just to make clear, this isn't an R1 zone. What was required in the past and what's still required is for the conditional use of a school, conditional approval and amended site plan approval. That's why it's before you this evening. I don't know if the zoning officer wanted to add anything that I missed in terms of the history or the background.
No, I mean, the parking...
Mr. Bridger?
Yep.
Do you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful?
Yes, ma'am, I do, thank you. The existing site has seventy-eight spaces, and the parking for this is based on the capacity, the rated capacity, not the actual students. So based on the rated capacity from the applicant's professionals, there's a total requirement of a hundred and forty-two. So there are sixty-four spaces short, which is their parking variance for that. And I'm sure they'll provide testimony about the number of trips as far as the increased students and the minimal faculty, but I just wanted to elaborate on that a little bit.
All right. Any, if there are no questions for Mr. Bridger or Mr. LePlace?
I just, I think I know the answer to this, but I had a quick clarification question on page three of five of the memo under Traffic Effects. It talks about the faculty increase from forty-five to forty-eight. It says, two of the faculty members will be boarding at the school, and one will drive to the campus. I assume that's two of the new faculty members will be boarding at the school, and one will drive not...
Yes, that's our understanding of that. And we didn't, I don't think I mentioned before, but there are borders on the site. Everyone doesn't commute to the site, so.
All right. If there are no immediate questions, maybe we could hear from the applicant.
So I'm Henry Chow of Hill Wallack LLP, here on behalf of the applicant, Byron Education Foundation. It's an IRS-designated nonprofit and public charity, which is an affiliate of the Princeton International School of Mathematics and Science. So the applicant is the owner of the property, which has served as the campus of PRISM, that's the acronym for the school, which is a private boarding school that also holds nonprofit and public charity status from the IRS. And I don't recall if I mentioned it, they've been there since 2013. So we are here for conditional use authorization because of the eighty-two student cap that was imposed by this board back in 1996 on the American Boy Choir School. As your planner mentioned, we're not proposing any physical changes, but we do need that conditional use authorization, which also triggers the need for minor site plan approval, even though we're not proposing any physical changes. And just by way of background to tell you how we got here, this all started with an application for a conditional use variance that we filed with the zoning board back in 2015. And that initial application sought approval for new buildings and significant renovations, also, you know, improvements on several other residential lots adjoining the property that the applicant had acquired. We ended up withdrawing that application after engaging in a dialogue with the neighboring homeowners. Um... homeowners. We then scaled down the original development proposal, which eliminated the need for the conditional use variance. So, we applied here for a conditional use authorization and major site plan approval in 2017. And that application sought various building additions, renovations, and various site improvements. That resulted in another round of dialogue with the neighbors. And after that dialogue, we withdrew that application and filed the current application in the summer of 2018. And what we're presenting to you now is the result of nearly four years of dialogue with the neighbors and represents a plan that both the applicant and the neighbors can live with. So, for the applicant, it's critical that it be able to increase enrollment to a hundred and twenty students. It currently has eighty-two students, which is the capped number, and that's not enough students to maintain financial solvency. The applicant needs to increase its enrollment to a hundred and twenty students, basically to keep its doors open. So, that's the reason for the application. We are in receipt of review memos from the board engineer, the environmental commission and the shade tree commission. There was also an old review memo by your landscape architect from June 2017 that actually pertained to our 2015 application that we subsequently withdrew. We don't think it's applicable to the current application because it relates to the impact of various site improvements on existing trees. We're no longer proposing any site improvements, so we're not sure how that's applicable. But we do have our team of professionals, the project manager, Jim Banks from Studio Hillier, our site engineer, Russ Smith from Hopewell Valley Engineering, our traffic engineer, Carly Toh Holt from Provenant Engineering, and we have the head of school, Matthew Pierce, who's here to address some operational issues associated with the review memos. And that, you know, we're ready to put our witnesses on. I don't know if you want to swear them all in at the same time?
That'd be fine.
Okay.
Gentlemen, would you all raise your right hand? Do you swear affirm your testimony this evening will be truthful? Thank you.
Could I just ask a quick question before you proceed? Because I was curious about that letter from our landscape consultant and why it was attached to our packet. There wasn't really much explanation. Can one of the staff members explain why we were given that?
You know, I'm not sure why it was included in the package, but there aren't any site improvements. It was relevant to the application in 2017 where there were site improvements. Obviously, if landscape issues come up, the board can talk to the applicant about any issues that might arise if there's any need for that. But as stated factually, there aren't any site improvements proposed with this application.
Okay. I'd like to have Matthew Pierce provide some testimony to address one of the items in the review memos. Oh. Matt, can you just go over your educational background, your educational experience and description of your current job duties?
Sure. Yes. So, after... I graduated with a bachelor's degree in physics and computer science in England, in London. And following that, a postgraduate certificate in education, which is a required certification to teach in England. I then went on to teach for ten years at Latimerapus School, which is a private school in London, and taught physics there and was also the head of physics there. I then came to America in 2004 and taught at the Thomas Jefferson High School for Science and Technology, which is a state-funded school in Virginia. You may have heard of it. It's US News and World Report often ranks it as the number-one school in the country. Certainly, in 2007, for about four or five consecutive years, it was well-regarded. So, I was the division manager for science and technology at that school. That school had... Was well-known for its educational practices and had many visitors from around the world, actually, thousands per year. So, with this in mind, having led the science and technology division at that school, I came to... And I spent the last five years at PRISM, blending the best of the American practices with the idea of the best practices from China. And this is really what the school in PRISM's school is all about. So, best practices from America, best practices from China, we're trying to build a world-class school. And we thought we were after a good start, but as you've heard, we... Our stumbling block is that we've reached our cap. So, to go back to the original question, yes, twenty-five years in education, the last five as the principal of the school.
Thank you, Matt. So, one of the conditional use standards is that it requires us to demonstrate the local need for the proposed facilities and whether or not that's adequately served by existing facilities within a feasible distance of the area to be served. So, with that in mind, can you just... I know you already touched upon what PRISM does, but can you just explain a little more what the educational niche... Maybe niche is not the right word, but what the educational mission of PRISM is and how it serves the community and whether there's anything like that in the general area?
Yes, thank you, Henry. So, the school is a STEM-focused school. We... It offers a comprehensive high school program, including, you know, languages, US history, English, of course, literature for four years. So, the students are well-educated, but our focus is in STEM. And when I say that, it means all students have to take all three sciences, physics, biology, chemistry, as well as two years of engineering, which is required for everybody, mathematics, up to at least calculus. And then we have lots of post AP... We follow the AP curriculum, and then we have lots of post AP electives to develop our talented students. And beyond that, a thread... A common thread running through the whole school is a four-year research program, which the school students are required to do that and to finish with two years of authentic research at the high school level. So, we feel that we're building a school which is quite unique. On top of that, we're blending the best practices, as I've said, from America and from China. And if, you know, according to my research, there doesn't seem to be anything like it in the Princeton area, so we do feel we have a unique niche for our school.
Are you aware of any other schools of this type, just even within the Mercer, Middlesex County areas?
No, not to my knowledge.
And just would like you to talk a little bit about what I touched upon in my opening, which is the financial feasibility of PRISM and whether it's, you know, feasible for the school to continue operating under the eighty-student cap?
No, unfortunately, we've hit a barrier, and it's not feasible for us to continue with just eighty-two students. We do need the one-twenty.
I think the only other thing in the review memos that are within your purview are the requests by the environmental commission. Yes. The first thing was for a composting plan, and the second item was for a EV charging station and two EV parking spaces. Are those things that the school has explored? And can you just provide an update of where we're at with that?
Yes. I mean, I've heard that EV parking is quite important to this world, and this is something that we definitely would... Since we've been prompted, we definitely would consider that. I think the only consideration for us is whether we go for level one or level two, but we're very much in favor of doing that. As far as the composting goes, we'd be happy to do that. We have developed a relationship with the Organic Farming Association, president of the Organic Farming Association, and it's possible we could do composting that way. We've also looked into having our hauler take care of it, but we're not quite sure yet how much it would cost us. So, it really comes down to financial consideration. The desire there is to certainly look into that, but we've not had enough time yet to figure out how much it will cost us to do the composting.
Okay. Is there anything the board would like to ask, Mr. Pierce?
Yes. Go ahead.
I don't know if somebody else is going to address the capacity analysis, but it seems that somebody else will.
Yes, we have Jim Banks from Studio Hillier.
All right. I'll wait then for those questions.
And he's actually next.
Quick question. Do you have bicycle accommodations on site for, obviously, students or faculty or staff who might want a bike to work or school?
We do have some bicycle racks, yes. They're not well-used yet, but we have them.
I'm just wondering, do most of your students come from abroad or... And what is, you know, this is not specifically germane, but I'm just curious to know, like, what is the general composition of your student body? And are there... It's all boarding, not... No day students. Is that correct?
No, we have... Currently, we have sixty-eight boarding students and fourteen day students.
Oh, okay.
So, we do have some local students, and the composition of the boarding students is predominantly from mainland China, but also from other countries. We have some students from Spain, formerly from Kazakhstan, from Russia in the past. So, we have a... One of our aims is to try to increase the diversity there. Of course, the best...
Are there any students who attend from local... Are there any students from Princeton or from the local area who attend?
Yes, we have fourteen day students.
Fourteen, I see.
Fourteen, yeah.
Okay.
Anyone else? Let me just ask one thing. You give a high school diploma or you will when you increase the student size?
We do give a high school diploma, yes. We've... So far, we've had three classes of students graduate.
Okay.
I could tell you more about that, but I'm not sure if you're interested to hear about that, but we've done very well with our students so far. Five going to MIT, five to UC Berkeley, and many other places. So, we've done some really... We've got a really good college track record over the last three years. So, we're recognized and we're accredited. And I would say, apart from Harvard, Stanford, and Yale, all the top private universities are accepting our students, so... Yes, Middle States accredited and also a member of the National Association of Independent Schools, NIS.
You testified that you have fifteen or so commuting students now, but you're going to more than double that, right? The part of this expansion is bringing in more commuting students. Is that correct?
Yes.
Thanks.
Okay. Thank you. Captain Jim Banks. So, I'd like to get Mr. Banks qualified. Can you go over your educational background, professional experience, and experience testifying before land use boards in New Jersey?
Yes. I graduated in architecture. Excuse me. I graduated in architecture, and I have a master's degree in urban planning, and I have worked for a variety of architectural firms and development firms over the past forty-seven years, I think. I've worked in Princeton in that role in the last thirty-five years, and I've been with Hillier for twenty-five years. So, I do have some experience in the field.
I think we can accept Mr. Banks.
You've testified before this board?
Yes, I've testified before both the planning board and the zoning board on a variety of projects in town.
Thank you very much.
The board accepts Mr. Banks' qualifications?
Yes.
Thank you.
Jim, if you could just give an overview of the existing facilities and address the capacity facilities and their ability to accommodate the new students and faculty?
Yes. As part of this application, Studio Hillier was asked to examine whether the proposed student increase of thirty-eight students from the current allowable of eighty-two to the proposed of a hundred and twenty students could be accommodated by the existing facilities. To conduct the study, we visited each of the PRISM's four buildings on campus, the Albemarle Building, the Science Center, Hobler House, and the Etl Dormitory, to record the current use of spaces in each building and to verify square footage, areas, and dimensions. We also calculated the occupancy capacities for each space in accordance with the applicable building code requirements. And in this case, that's the International Building Code 2015 edition. This code provides square footage requirements per occupant for different types of uses, educational uses, classrooms, workshops, labs, and so forth. In addition, we calculated fire egress paths and recorded corridor widths and number of fire exits. To put the study in a broader context, there are sixteen existing teaching spaces. These are existing spaces now on campus that are distributed among three of the four buildings. And the proposed enrollment that we're discussing of a hundred and twenty students, if all the teaching spaces were in use simultaneously, which they never are, this would equate to an average of between seven and eight students per classroom. So, as you might expect, in terms of the existing teaching space, we found that the existing PRISM's facilities can easily accommodate the proposed enrollment of a hundred and twenty students. To look at this in a more detailed way, the Albemarle Building, the original residential mansion on the property, is the main campus building, and it contains a mix of teaching, dining, and admin spaces. The teaching spaces in Albemarle consist of computer labs, workshops, and an art studio in addition to the conventional classroom spaces. If all the Albemarle teaching spaces were used simultaneously, Albemarle could hold a total of two-hundred-and-one students and teachers. Looking at just the spaces we identified as conventional classrooms, i.e. not including labs, workshops, and art studio, the building could still hold a total of a hundred and sixty-nine teachers and students. There are four assembly spaces on the first floor of Albemarle, two of which are used for student assembly and two of which are used for dining. The largest student assembly space is used for student club fairs, open houses, and student meetings, and can accommodate a hundred and ten students with movable chairs and fifty-one students with tables and chairs. The smaller student assembly area can accommodate a hundred and thirty-two people standing, and this space is used for morning assembly and student body announcements. The other two assembly spaces are adjacent to the kitchen facilities and are used for seating, dining. These two assembly spaces can accommodate seventy-five diners, and so the entire proposed student body with teacher supervision can be comfortably accommodated in two seatings. The science building, also known as the cottage, is primarily a teaching building. This facility comprises one classroom and two labs, and when these spaces are in use simultaneously, they can accommodate fifty-two students. Hobler House, once the headmaster's residence, contains both teaching and admin spaces. The building has two classrooms and one workshop, and if these spaces were in simultaneous use, they could accommodate forty students. The Etl Dormitory, as its name suggests, is exclusively a student-sleeping facility, and the dorm currently houses sixty-eight boarding students. But the rated capacity of the facility is eighty-three students, which is the proposed number of borders under this increased enrollment proposal. There are also three apartments in the Etl Dorm for house parents. Regarding bathrooms, we examined each building's bathroom facilities and conducted a fixture count and found that each building within... Found that each building was within building code requirements for its intended use. The Etl Dorm was particularly generous in this regard, having sufficient facilities The Etel Dorm was particularly generous in this regard, having sufficient facilities to accommodate a hundred and thirteen students in accordance with the National Plumbing Code. Turning to fire and emergency egress, Albemarle, the Science Center and the Etel Dorm are fully sprinkled buildings. All buildings are fully appointed with smoke detectors and fire extinguishers and we calculated the emergency egress paths, measured corridor widths and counted building fire egress points and found all in accordance with code. So to summarize, if all of PRISM's existing teaching spaces were in use simultaneously, they could theoretically accommodate two hundred and ninety-three persons. Conversely, less than half the existing teaching space would need to be in use at any given time to accommodate the proposed enrollment of a hundred and twenty students. In addition, existing bathroom facilities and emergency arrangements are adequate to meet the requirements of the enrollment increase. So that concludes my summary of the facility's capacity study and if you have any questions, I'd be happy to respond.
Yeah, I had questions about both the dining facilities and the assembly rooms.
Yes.
Basically, the sizes that you're representing, I guess for the dining, you're suggesting the capacity for a hundred and fifty?
At two, at two sittings.
In two sittings is adequate, but you know, you've got your student body of a hundred and twenty and you have forty-eight faculty that you're projecting, I guess you're assuming that not all the faculty will eat in the lunchroom?
Yes, that there'd only be supervising teaching staff there at that point.
Okay, I mean, I still think it's a little bit tight to think that, you know, every single seat is going to be occupied. I mean, you're quite close to capacity at inability to seat a hundred and fifty people. There's not going to be really any empty seats in either sitting and so I'd like to, you know, get a little bit of reflection on the reality of that.
Yep.
Go ahead.
Well, it's a rather informal arrangement that the school has now, but in terms of how it's working at the moment, I think it would probably be better to have the headmaster back to respond to that.
Okay. Why don't I ask my second question about the assembly and then he can address both of them at once. So you're saying that, that smaller assembly room would be with everyone standing? When you say standing room only?
That's correct.
Okay, that you can accommodate a hundred and thirty-two and then the larger room, you can accommodate a hundred and ten seated?
Exactly.
So.
Because that's what's happening at the moment.
Okay, so there's no need for a school-wide assembly space, is basically what you're saying?
Yes, because it's, not seated, but standing as they do now in the smaller assembly room, they do assemble the student body for announcements and things of that nature.
But again, staff don't need to be there because, well, twelve staff members for a hundred and twenty students.
Well, at the moment, let me see here. I'm just looking for the numbers I quoted. Yes, well, we're talking about a hundred and thirty-two, so that is.
Hundred and twenty students and twelve faculty. Again, it seems like you're pushing the envelope a little bit, but you know.
The one item I would mention in that regard is that the two assembly spaces are side by side and so it, that there is some accommodation for overflow in that space.
With some kind of a video connection or?
Well, no, just standing in the area.
There's not, is there an opening between the rooms or?
Oh, yes, yeah.
Oh, okay.
There's more than one actually. You can see that in the floor plan.
Okay.
If you go to the first plan exhibit. The Albemarle floor plan on the first floor.
Mm-hmm.
You can see to the left of center, you've got the two assembly spaces there.
With the double doors and the pair of double, there are two double doors connected in those.
Yes, exactly, yes.
Okay.
Yes, so to answer your first question about the dining, currently, as you say, we have eighty-two students and we don't have a problem with them having their lunch right now. Our plan is to extend the lunch period so that they can kind of rotate into a couple of sections. So effectively, eighty-two students now, we see no problem with it. If we had another thirty-two students and sort of double the lunchtime so that they roll over, we don't think it would be a problem. Just the faculty don't all go to lunch at the same time. They have, they run office hours and they spend time and they sort of, we stagger it. So in fact, we're not really talking of a hundred and twenty plus all the staff at the same time for lunch. For the assembly space, as Jim pointed out, we currently have eighty-two students and all of our faculty in the mornings. It's just a five-minute announcement where we have everybody there together and it works. So we feel like if we, again, have the room next to it, which is adjoining, we would focus on the students there and we'd have the overspill of the faculty on the edges, which we, and there's also a hallway you'll see leading into the assembly space labeled number two, and so they can also be in that space. Effectively, as long as they're in earshot, it's good enough.
Okay, so if I can paraphrase what I think I heard you say about the lunch periods, is that there's an extended period of time, some students will eat in five minutes, others will take a real lunchtime, but it's not as simple as saying that it's two fixed lunch periods with seating of seventy-five people per lunch period.
We tried a few different models and so what we found has worked and this is what we would do if we get to the, go to the one-twenty is extend our lunch to about an hour and a half. So it's plenty of time to either let them roll and organically just flow because some of them go and do activities and some don't, or to actually make two periods, which we could do if we found that there was a problem. But we, you know, we found surprisingly that with the number we have now, we don't seem to have too much of a lockjam, so we think based on, you know, just another thirty-eight students, we should be okay.
Also, sort of on the topic of lunch, although I'll veer off into other things, I'm just curious about whether their students have the ability in nice weather to eat outdoors?
They do, yes.
Okay, so you can accommodate some overflow at least sometimes, I'm not saying it's a solution all the time, but.
No, it's actually, sorry, I'm sorry, if you hadn't finished your point, I interrupted you, but I didn't want to say that for a permanent solution because obviously in the winter, although I have to say that our students still go out in the winter because they're young and they don't mind a bit of snow, but yeah, most, we have a big patio just outside the assembly area too and many of our students go, and faculty, go outside and eat outside when the weather is okay. So a lot of the time, that does ease the situation tremendously.
Good, and the related question has to do with being outdoors and could you speak a little bit about, and this is again, out of curiosity, not related to capacity necessarily, but how or whether you use, it's a beautiful site, and how or whether you use the outdoors as a teaching tool in sciences and just talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, as you say, we do have an environmental class that they'll spend some time out there. We also have teachers that will vary the classroom space, especially in the humanities, they often like to go in and be creative, you know, think up, sit under the trees and have inspirational ideas, so we use it in that way. Also, we use it for, we have a sports, well, a soccer field on the back, so we do use it for sport and for after-school activities. We have students running around the campus and playing, we have a basketball court as well, so we do use the area for sports regularly and we do use it for educational purposes, but it's, I wouldn't say that's so much schedule order structured, apart from in the environmental science class where they're going around to take a look at certain plant growths and things like that.
Thank you.
Did we want to bring Mr. Banks back for any other capacity questions?
Anyone? I think, did you say you had someone who was going to speak about traffic and so on?
Yes, yes, he's the next witness, Carlito Holt, Providence Engineering. Okay, Mr. Holt, can you just give a quick overview of your educational background, professional experience and experience testifying in front of land use boards?
Sure. My name is Carlito Holt, I'm a partner with Providence Design Engineering. I have a bachelor's degree in civil engineering from Villanova University, twenty years of experience in the industry, I'm a licensed professional engineer in New Jersey as well as New York, Connecticut, Rhode Island, I'm also a licensed professional traffic operations engineer. I've appeared before numerous boards throughout New Jersey, including Plainsboro, Hopewell, Montgomery, Bridgewater.
Okay, like.
Except his credentials, thank you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Mr. Holt, can you just give an overview of the traffic impacts of the increased student enrollment on the adjacent roadways?
Sure, so as indicated previously, the school is looking to increase the enrollment from eighty-two students to a hundred and twenty students. Since this is an existing operation, the anticipated traffic from the increased enrollment can be very accurately quantified. What I have up there is table number two, it's directly out of the traffic impact study that we submitted dated June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen.
Mr. Cho, do you want that to be in exhibit?
Yes, I guess we, or is it, it's actually in the traffic study report that he submitted that it's, it's just a recreation of that?
Well, since you've blown it up, why don't we make it exhibit A1?
So this table is, table number two from the June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen report that projects the anticipated increase in trips into and out of the campus during the two critical peak AM and peak PM hours. There's three components that would comprise the anticipated traffic increase, the first of which would be from faculty and there would only be one additional commuting faculty member. So as you can see in the first row, that would entail one entering trip during the AM hour and one exiting trip during the PM hour. The next item is buses or a singular bus that the school is proposing to add to accommodate the additional commuting students that they anticipate with the increased enrollment. So that one bus would actually be an entering and an exiting trip in both the AM and the PM hour. And the additional commuting students that wouldn't be taking the bus would account for four additional pickup, drop-off, drop-off trips. So those are the four trips that you see entering and exiting in both of those peak hours. So in total, you're looking at only eleven total trip increase during either the AM or PM hour and, you know, in our analysis, we're considering all this traffic occurring simultaneously with the peak commuter roadway hour, when in reality, the peak hours of the school are really out of phase, especially during that more critical peak PM hour. So as noted in staff's memo, the traffic increase is really de minimis and the associated incremental impacts at any of the study locations that we analyzed were minimal at best.
Could you?
I don't know if you want to ask any questions specifically on the traffic or we can go on to the parking?
Yeah, and he's going to talk about parking so later, so if there are any questions about traffic impacts.
Could you just explain about using a bus, you're not using a bus now, is that correct?
There is no bus today.
So that this bus is going to pick up students along a route, it's going to pick them up one place and bring them, I don't quite understand.
Yeah, I mean, I think maybe we can have the head of school talk about it, but I think the plan is with regard to the new commuting students to have a singular bus, you know, drive around and pick them up and bring them to school, but we can have Mr. Pierce come back and address that really quickly.
Yeah, the idea would be to have a collection point somewhere and have the bus bring them in so that instead of having many, many individual car journeys, we would just have them go to some place and bring the bus in with all the kids on it. So that would be the idea. We haven't, you know, until we get the students, we haven't worked out exactly where that would be, but that's the principle.
I'm just, I was just very curious because a single collection point is going to be something that will have to be worked out with the engineering department. Well, you know, you're going to have that many cars sitting with students waiting to be picked up at some point in Princeton, it's going to take a certain amount of coordination to do it. Mr. Bridger, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think it's kind of hard to tell at this point since they don't know where their students are going to be coming from, they could be coming from other areas and then if they are going to be dropped off somewhere, then I would say it needs to be not a residential neighborhood, but some area that lends itself to that, like.
Yeah, I'm more concerned about being able to get any of the students to ride the bus, from what I hear about public school students in Princeton, they have no interest. I think. I think that probably this is something that will undergo a certain amount of modification from time to time. Could you talk about the parking, Cho?
Sure. So with respect to the parking, again, since it's an existing operation, you're able to accurately quantify the current parking demand, relate that to a ratio and project what the future parking needs would be with the increased enrollment. So as part of our parking study, we performed onsite parking accumulation surveys for two consecutive weekdays where a representative of our firm went around the site between the hours of seven AM and five PM on both days and at half-hour increments, recorded the total amount of vehicles parked on the campus. What you can see in table number four, which is marked as exhibit A2, which again is a table right out of the June twentieth, two thousand and eighteen report, is that the maximum observed parking demand at any time during those two days was a total of forty-four vehicles. So once you have that maximum observed demand, you need to identify what's the most relevant independent variable to relate that demand to, to project their future parking needs. And in this case, the main driver of parking demand is faculty. So at the time we performed our parking count, there was forty-four faculty members. So it just so happened that the parking demand related to a one-to-one ratio between the faculty and staff members. That amount is projected to increase to forty-eight with the increased student enrollment, so the future parking demand with that forty-eight faculty and staff level would be a total of forty-eight parked vehicles. So the provision of seventy-eight vehicles currently, or seventy-eight parking spaces currently on site is more than adequate to accommodate the future parking demand. is more than adequate to accommodate the future parking demand.
Any, any questions, anyone?
I guess just, I think I understood from the, the submission that student parking would not be permitted at all. Is, did I read that cor- am I remembering that correctly?
Yes, because the, was it the Environmental Commission suggested?
I think you are right, but we can have Mr. Pierce testify as to that.
The Environmental Commission suggests that they do allow student parking.
Yes, we were thinking of not having students park, but that, that was, that is the plan at the moment. Of course, we're flexible, but that's the plan.
And Ms. Gunning was mentioning that there was a recommendation in the Environmental Commission report suggesting that students who drive be allowed to drive to school, because it would be just one trip in and one trip out, instead of one trip in and out to drop off in the morning and in and out to pick up in the afternoon. Would you entertain that recommendation?
I'm sure it's something we can, we could consider. Typically, right now, with the students that we have, there's, no one seems to have a desire to drive in. And it seems to be a trend, I noticed at Thomas Jefferson. Increasingly, kids don't drive as they used to in, in the past. So, but, so that plan was not to allow it, but I'm sure we could consider it.
Mr. Bridger, just a question for you. Wouldn't, if students are allowed to park, wouldn't that change the calculation of the rated capacity under the applicable ordinance, meaning they would just need a greater variance than they're seeking tonight?
Well, the, the capacity just speaks to numbers of the capacity of all the buildings, I'm not sure if it...
Well, I, I recall us discussing this before, that's why I'm bringing it up. The ordinance, it's ten B two eighty-two, as a footnote, says where the building is an institution that prohibits the operation of automobiles by students or restricts parking of students to designated institutional parking areas. Such students need not be included in the calculation of rated capacity.
Right, I don't think we went into that detail of, of the capacity, the required parking. We, we base it on the classrooms, the dormitories, and the administrative staff, but that is a good catch on that conditional use.
But I think it's clear that there's a significant surplus of parking on the site currently, that assuming, you know, with the age distribution of your student body, that even if every commuting student who is old enough to drive wanted to, you still wouldn't fill all the parking spaces that you've got.
Mr. Pierce, are there any students currently driving to school?
No, currently not, no. And none have expressed a desire to, which is kind of why we had the, you know, that's why we're thinking the way we are. But as you said, if we have enough spaces...
Right, you have a pretty small sample of day students currently, so you never know.
I think it's great that your students have no interest in driving.
Yes.
They're, they're too busy with the work that we give them to do, so...
So I just wanted to just verify the numbers again, just make sure I understood it. According to the materials that were submitted, right now, there's fifteen students that are commuting, and you're, you're looking to expand that by twenty-two more. And then the analysis you had was that, your projection is that eighteen of the commuting students will be transported by bus, and nineteen will be dropped off. That's just a projection off of the current base, is that, that how you?
The, the thirty-seven that's footnoted in, in table number two is the total commuting that would be at the one-twenty level, so it's inclusive of the current eighty-two students as well. So it's actually only a, it's a twenty-two student increase. And then the eighteen that would be bussed deduct from that thirty-seven, but there's potentially twenty, the existing twenty-two that are in there.
And that ratio is just a projection from what's, what, what your experience is right now? I'm assuming that your projection for the in...
The, the mix of commuting and boarding students?
Yes.
Yeah, it's just, it's just a proj- projection, yes.
Sounds like they don't have a bus at all right now, so it's kind of a shot in the dark.
We just have one more witness. Usually, the site engineer is the most important one, but since we're not doing any site improvements, Mr. Smith is here to just discuss primarily the, you know, how we've addressed, or how the nuisance factors are addressed by existing conditions, existing landscaping distances from property boundaries. I think he's also going to just give a brief overview of the site. Okay, really quick, Mr. Smith, can you just go over your educational background, professional experience, and experience before land use boards in New Jersey?
Yes, my name is Russell Smith, I'm president of Hopewell Valley Engineering. I have a bachelor's science in civil engineering from Lafayette College. And I'm a licensed professional engineer and professional planner in the state of New Jersey. I've been practicing for over thirty-five years, and I've testified in front of hundreds of boards, including this one.
We accept his credentials.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Smith, can you just give, before you go into your analysis of how we've addressed the nuisance, or how the nuisance fa- factors are addressed by existing conditions, can you just quickly go over the site to give the board an understanding of it?
Yes. I've marked two exhibits. The first one I'm going to use is up on the easel, it's exhibit A3. It's a colored version of our minor site plan. I've added key map, adjoining property owners, and the zoning chart and parking charts to that exhibit. I've colored it, the dark green are the wooded areas. The lighter green are the grass areas. The brown are, are buildings that are on the site. Gray are the driveways that connect all the different parking areas. And the red to brownish color are walkways that connect those buildings. This is lot one in block eighty-one oh two, seventeen point two-five acres. Our main driveway entrance is from Lambert Drive. It enters on the easterly side of the property. There's four main buildings. We have the Hobler Building. I'm going to attempt to highlight that with my laser pointer, it's right in this location. The Science Center, Jim described these buildings, the Science Center is located right here. This is the Edel Dorm, and this is the main Albemarle Building. We have parking located throughout the site. As everyone has testified, we have seventy-eight parking spaces throughout our property. They're located in, really in four different areas. There's forty-four spaces in a paved parking area right in this location. We have eight spaces adjacent to the Science Center on either side. There's nineteen spaces in the area of the Albemarle Building. There's spaces on this side, and then also spaces in our loop. And then there's seven spaces next to Hobler, in a smaller gravel parking lot. So that's how we came up with our total of seventy-eight spaces on the property. This is the R1 Zone, private school is a permitted conditional use. You'll notice in our zoning chart, we've identified two criteria that this current site does not meet. Normally, this is when I start to talk about proposed improvements, we don't have anything to talk about tonight. But existing conditions, there's two, two non-conforming conditions that are existing. One is impervious cover, twelve percent is permitted. The current site as it exists today is at fifteen point eight. The other condition that we don't meet is the side setback for parking. That occurs right over here, next to Hobler, that's an existing parking lot. Twenty feet's required for the setback, and we provide four. And that, again, is based on an existing condition. All right, I'd like to, I'd like to talk about the nuisance factors created by the development. It's a condition of your conditional use requirements, is we want to consider whether there are nuisance factors and address the shielding of the, of the existing property. Everyone says a picture's worth a thousand words, so I'm going to use the aerial photograph that I brought this evening. I've marked that A4, that's essentially just a Google Maps depiction of the property. I have all the adjoining property owners inside the Lambert Drive Loop. I have smaller versions, if anyone on the board would like one. I thought it's helpful to, to have this in front of you, to give, to get an idea of the general location of, of the school improvements in relation to the surrounding properties, a- as well as the number of trees that are on this property. My color exhibit had that, but, but the picture, I think, really does help. The thing that's, I think, most striking is that the facilities are really centered in this, the interior portion of the block. You really don't see them from the street when you drive by. There's significant amounts of trees in this area of the site now, making really our buildings self-contained and separated and buffered from surrounding properties. So, you know, I really do feel that, that we do provide the shielding from the adjoining properties, from the adjoining residential properties to our school site. Obviously, the school site's been there for a long time, and it really is not, not intrusive into this existing established residential neighborhood. The final thing that I'd like to discuss this evening is the, is the bulk variance for parking. I'm going to approach this from the C2, the flexible bulk variance standards. We're proposing to maintain the seventy-eight existing parking spaces. The calculations that are required by your ordinance establish a number for this school at one forty-two. I provided a chart in, in consultation with your staff. What we looked at were two different situations. We looked at school hours, and we looked at evening and weekend hours. Obviously, the s-
Mr. Sim- let me just stop you for a sec, the chart you're referring to is the zoning chart on the site plan cover page?
That is correct, yes. If, if you'd like to follow along with these, it's called the Off-Street Parking Requirements, R1 Zone. So we looked at different types of uses that are contained within your ordinance. We looked at classrooms, so we looked at classroom spaces. We have a total of eighteen classrooms. Your ordinance requires five spaces per classroom, so that gives us a total requirement of ninety spaces. The dormitories, the Edel Dormitory. The number of spaces required is based on the rated capacity of that building. It's one space for every four persons of rated capacity. The rated capacity, based on Jim's analysis, is eighty-eight people. You divide that by four, and you get twenty-two spaces. Finally, academic and administrative areas. The requirement for parking is one space for every one point five people of rated occupancy. So these are really the offices, the academic areas, they are not the classroom space, we counted that previously. So we used forty-five persons of rated occupancy, based on what we have. You divide that by one point five, and you get an additional thirty spaces. So you total ninety, twenty-two, and thirty, and that's where we ended up with the one forty-two. So that's what we're comparing ourselves against to evaluate this variance. So, using the C2 Bulk Variance Standards in forty colon fifty-five D, municipal land use law, the question really is, is whether the grant of a variance would promote or advance a purpose of zoning in the MLUL, and the benefits of such deviation would outweigh any detriment. It is my opinion that pursuant to NJSA forty colon fifty-five D dash two, these purposes of zoning would be promoted or advanced. The first purpose of zoning would be A, advance the appropriate use of land that will promote the general welfare. The next purpose of zoning would be C, provide adequate light, air, and open space. E, promote the preservation of the environment. G, provide sufficient space for open space according to the respective environmental requirements. And finally, I, promote a desirable visual environment through creative development techniques and good civic design and arrangement. And really, the issue here is, should we build parking, additional sixty-four spaces of parking on a campus that we've established doesn't need it? Our traffic engineer testified that we do not need additional parking. We don't want to build this expansive new parking lot, increase stormwater runoff, remove trees in an area where we don't need it. There will be no substantial detriment to the public good, as this unnecessary parking will not be constructed. We'll be able to preserve natural areas of the site. This is supported by the Princeton Environmental Commission, as well as our neighbors. And finally, will this variance substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zoning ordinance and the master plan? And it's my opinion that not building the large parking lot is consistent with the low-intensity character of the residential zoning as intended by both the master plan and the zoning ordinance, and that further, furthers that purpose. So I feel that this variance should be gr- should be granted based on those facts. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Anyone? Go ahead.
Do you know whether the gutters, do the roofs have gutters on the buildings?
Yes.
I believe that some of them do, yes.
Do they connect directly to pipes that connect to the storm sewer? Or are they disconnected such that they flow, the, the water flows off the roof and into the woods, or?
I don't know for sure.
I would imagine that they're drywells, I mean, this was built in nineteen seventeen.
Oh, drywells. I'm just, the reason I'm asking is that I'm wondering whether there's an opportunity, if they do connect directly to the storm sewer system, to disconnect them and have the water from the roof, the roof runoff go just onto the lawn's property, et cetera. It's not a big deal, it's just a way to get a small am- well, relatively speaking, a small amount of potential floodwater out of the system.
I, I, I don't know for sure.
I, I believe that there's a, a mix of connection to underground pipes, and then just, the, the leaders are just coming down onto the ground. But there's no connection, as I understand it, to the street storm system. So in other words, the underground piping system that, that exists in some areas of the- site, um, disperses and daylights on the site elsewhere. Um, so, uh, and, and I say that because I have noticed that there are underground storm drains, uh, that have covers on them at various locations on the site.
Thank you.
So, um, that concludes our presentation, if there's no other questions for Mr. Smith.
Any- Anybody else? I think at, at this point, we still have a few people sitting in the audience, I'd like to open things up, public participation. So let me ask if there's anyone in the audience who'd like to come forward and speak to this application? No? Yes.
Mr. Evans, we need to swear you in if you're giving any testimony. If you'd raise your right hand, you swear from your testimony this evening will be truthful. Thank you.
Get closer to the microphone, please.
So, uh, I'm here to, um, represent, uh, twenty-two, uh, neighbors that are adjoining the, uh, circle of Lambert Drive. Um, they all would be here tonight, but they asked me to represent them, uh, in support of the application. Um, I, our, uh, neighborhood has been negotiating, working with PRISMS for five years, I believe, and prior to that, uh, we'd been working with prior developers and people that were looking to purchase the property from, uh, the Boy Choir School, and it's been a, a long, hard battle for the neighborhood, um, and I feel that, uh, representing the neighborhood, that we, uh, support their application because it represents, um, the best way to preserve our neighborhood without any future development, um, and their increasing enrollment will ensure their sustainability, hopefully, for years to come. Um, and if that happens and you approve their, uh, application, uh, it'll put a lot of us to rest, uh, that we don't have to continue, um, this process, and hopefully there'll be a, a sustainable, uh, school. And, um, so that's, that's really why I'm here, uh, to present and to represent all of the neighbors, neighborhood, um, twenty-two houses. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else? I guess there isn't anyone else who lives in the neighborhood beside the twenty-two houses. All right, let me close the public portion, is there any further questions for applicant?
I do have one, and I, I hope it's a quick one, I, I guess I would direct it to the principal. I noted the school owns nine adjoining homes, I guess, lots, and I'm just curious, are, or do faculty live there, or? Not to open a can of worms. How do you use, or how do you foresee using those?
Uh, yes, these are mainly faculty housing. I have one of the houses as the head, and, uh, some of our administrators, um, have the perm houses, so they're all used by, uh, faculty and admin-
Great, thank you.
And if I could just elaborate on that, um, at the outset, like I, like I mentioned before, there were various iterations of the application, the original iteration, and I, I believe the second iteration also called for, um, the adjacent residential lots to be combined with the main lot and to, you know, to further enlarge the campus and provide further buildings. Um, as a result of our discussions with the neighbors, we have actually agreed, um, to a deed restriction that we will record once, um, you know, if we get this approval, final unappealable approval, that we will record that deed restriction that prevents us from ever merging those residential lots with the main lot, so that they will be kept residential and will never become part of the campus.
Thank you.
Okay. If there are no further questions? Would, would you like to make a motion, as long as you're-
I would, delighted to move this, uh, approval of this application.
Is there a second?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, if there are no further discussion? Do you wanna call the roll on that?
I guess I'm just curious, did we impose a condition to allow student parking, should it be desired? It was a recommendation of PEC and-
He wanted to know whether we'd, we were going to impose a condition to allow student parking. You don't, does it, does it change anything in the zoning requirements? Mr. Bridger? I'm not getting it, I mean. Derek, i- if we imposed, if we added a condition that student parking could be allowed, does that change anything in the zoning requirements?
Well, the way the parking is based on the various uses, all the students are accounted for in the parking requirement, whether they're dormitory students or, um, it doesn't really distinguish, um, I don't think it makes a big difference, I don't think it, it triggers another variance, um, but-
It is another variance?
I don't think it does, I mean, I, there's eighty, eighty-three students, um, in the dormitories, and the rest are accounted in the classrooms, I mean, it, it just doesn't lay it out that way, um-
Okay.
I mean, you could grant an additional variance, I don't think the, the number of additional kids is, you know-
Won't, won't come close to the number of available spaces that they have.
So are you, you're proposing an amended motion?
I guess I'm, I, I, I really was asking a question, I wasn't sure if we had stipulated that that should be a condition, since it was a recommendation of PEC and we had some discussion about how it would not be harmful to do it.
You wanna include-
I don't know if, if the board feels strongly about it, I mean, it was a recommendation that was made, it doesn't seem like there's a need for it, um, but, I mean, if you wanna discuss that, we could.
Did you, Louise, did you want to-
Have a little different to it.
Want to include that or not?
I, I think I would rather not amend, and the reason being, um, I feel like if we, feel like that might have an unintended consequence of actually encouraging-
Driving.
-students to drive who might otherwise not care at all one way or the other and would be taking the bus, if there actually ends up being a bus, which I assume there will be. So, for that reason, I, I think I'd just move it.
I, I would agree, I mean, I understand the rationale, Y piece-
Exactly.
-it's kinda decided, but, you know, I feel like it's kind of like a mute point.
Okay, so-
Yep.
We're going to, we have a motion that's seconded without this addition, do you wanna call the roll on that, please?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Ms. Sacks?
Yes.
Mr. Stankowitz?
Yes.
Mr. Texorni?
Yes.
Mrs. Alman?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Mrs. Gunning?
Yes.
Mr. McGowan?
Yes.
Motion carried.
Okay. Thank you.
Move to adjourn?
Well said. Okay.
It would've been if Jerry hadn't decided to complete wardrobe.
Do you wanna keep them? Yeah, either yours. I, I kinda, I just-
Does it actually go on the bed, or?